Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Mike, could you call a role?
Ms. Beneki, Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Assam Player.
Here.
Ms. Hope.
Here.
Ms. Hollingworth.
Here.
Ms. Paoli. Mr. Seidel.
Here.
Vice President Ho Gertl.
Here.
President Crockett.
Here. Please stand for the flag. Mike, could you please read the statement concerning open public meetings?
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the Superintendent of Schools in the following manner. On January 12th, 2022, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices on Lincoln Avenue, Haddonfield. A written notice was submitted and filed with the Haddonfield Borough Clerk, and notices were emailed to the Courier-Post and the retrospect newspaper.
Let's get started. Thank you all for coming. We have a big crowd tonight and a lot to celebrate, so we'll get started with student commendations.
Do you have a representative, a minister for Atticale? Okay, so to Atticale, you guys being here? Let's put on, first, let's put on the end of the case.
Okay.
National American Association, yes. People like to repeat, they have to change, tell me there's a National American Association finals? Did we talk about this? Oh, pretty good deal. So National American Association finals, we do have a whole school that is recommended. Really just came down to change the extraordinary. Mom Schmitz, so we appreciate you taking care of it. Done. You know, hopefully moves to the next one. So, part of this is PSAT scores, right? So you take PSAT and I wish I didn't. You're like, the point one percent. Against millions of others. So it's really, and when there's a whole process of applying to do that, so that's the entry way. And I do engage with a lot of them, but I can tell you this, aside getting as you put, get SAT scores, it's like, it's valuable, it's all that he does. Realized young man, very proud.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Next, we have Sonia Woltke. Cecily was hotter, various new accomplishments, so have. And then she was up there in South Jersey. Other various. Then next, we have our national German winners. Ms. I think you'll come up with us and all this, because you know this very well. Look at that smile on her face. Love it. I've got a little bit more about.
Yes, good evening. I was telling that these students and parents, it's been so long to see everyone personally. So I'm thrilled to be here and to have very many people here regardless of coming. Over language in one thousand. And this is. It's very special to. In our country and will also use. So we are very, very happy. So no, we are.
Just read the names in there. You know, any name, it's hard. Gold, nowhere, she's going to.
Genzel?
Genzel. Danny Anderson. Ava Albert. Oh, Walden.
This is Uncle Ava. Oh.
Oh. Last, we saw what we saw. Your parents, have a. George Siri, Tom Fuller. So be able to point. Ralph Best. Allison Goodes. Jack Walters. Julia Hart. Crystal Pitar. Nina Stevens. Devin Mudd.
Just over this line a little bit.
I'm following our achievement awards. Anne Urban. Gray. You're both. In Seville. Atticale Carter. Jeanne Corley. Barbara Williams. Anna Baxter. And it was Mac. That's the burning. Nelson Thader. Eric Jordan. And Polly. Have to take a crowd. Group over there just kind of coming from right now. Yeah, what we do with that. That should really come off for you by the way. If I just come on forward, right? Go. That's maybe your own thing. Congratulations.
Hello. Well, we gave a double break. Enjoy joining to trying to win the old page. For travel work for a month and for spending the year's job. Thank you.
Okay, next we're going to move on to our student representatives in port. We have Audrey Giacosta Bell here today.
Yeah, so Cinderella started its production last weekend, last week. It's amazing and people can still see it this Friday and Saturday night. For sports, our winter seasons have ended. The Boys and Girls Swim won state championships and for the first time ever, the girls went completely undefeated. And Charlie, you know, you rep over there is also the South Jersey Voice Diver of the Year, so. Um, for water fountains, so two new water fountains are going to be installed in the beach gym and just outside the cafeteria. And these are always being used by the students and are extremely efficient, so we're excited to see those up and running soon. For testing, the juniors had state mandated testing last week and everything went smoothly. Some students have expressed concerns about the Bancroft parking lot. Students were reminded that Bancroft is a new lot available to students and that it's a privilege. That being said, paving the parking lot in the future would make things run more smoothly. And lastly, last week, there was also a trash cleanup to help beautify the Spelman parking lot. In early March, HMHS students, student leaders met with Mr. Klaus on the district calendar. And on April 5th, the Principal's Advisory Committee, along with the Student Council members and other student leaders, will meet with the district architect and Mr. Klaus to discuss how to make HMHS spaces more student centered and the upcoming bond referendum. And HMHS is heading full force into spring. Our spring sports have kicked off and students are really excited to start competing. The seniors are excited to head to Disney World this Friday or next Friday they're leaving. And then dance season is also being kicked off next Friday as well with the freshman dance and then sophomore party and junior and senior prom.
Oh, this is on music of Saturday.
Yeah, I saw it on opening night, straight.
I heard great things. How did you think about? How did students feel about the calendar? Were there any overall reactions?
I think overall, it was pretty well received, especially with the GP test and talking about AP classes. I think that was definitely a big thing that people had thought about that. Would definitely assist some students. Less stress levels.
And you can feel free that if you have, that you have something to do, a moment to do, you don't need to sit a whole meal. And thank you so much for doing this. It's a huge. And I want to thank again the student representatives because they're very much a liaison between us and the students, so it's so helpful to have them here. Okay, moving on to our presentation. We're going to start with the annual audit.
Hopefully everybody has in front of them, the financial summary for 2021. If I can attract your attention, we're left in. We took in this year, 2021, back then. Forty-seven million, four seventy-five. Tuition revenue, 259,000. Everybody looking at the book, this is.
Yeah, I think it's a separate.
Tuition was 259,000. Miscellaneous revenue, 531,000. State aid, 2,638,000. Total revenue for the year was 40,009,0127. We expended in the same period, 49,846,357. Resulting in a net gain of operations of 54,770. We started with an overall fund balance of 8,367,852. This year, GADG 84 was a new pronouncement, put in from trust, the unemployment comp, with a prior period adjustment of 38411 for that. The revised restated fund balance beginning is 8,751,863. Ending fund balance is 8,806,633. That's our overall fund balance and that's defined right below. What makes that up? Reserve for encumbrances, 669,000. Capital reserve, 3,296,525. Of which we put 800,000 in this year's budget, 2122. Maintenance reserve, 2,293,776. Unemployment, 394,857. Designated for subsequent years expenditures, that's what's put in the 2122 budget, 591,913. And unreserved surplus of 1,56288. Totalling the 8,806,633. The unreserved surplus is higher than the previous year. In this, this year, 21 and 22, the state raised the level of 4% from 2%. That's why that is higher of expenditure. Comparison of budget to actual. The overall budget was 43,820 and we expended 41,515. Or 94.74%, which is similar to the previous. That's about a good range for us. School districts really return surplus by not what they receive, what they don't spend. They could watch and spend. So overall, you're in pretty good condition. You have a pretty good gap for reserve and maintenance reserve. And overall, we're pretty decent shape. Board referees were in pretty good condition. And there's no comments or recognition. Thank you.
So before we get on to our budget presentation, we're gonna. Backtrack to student commendations because we have Addie Frye with us here today.
This is for your word and your, your yard hope, certainly probably you can tell us a little bit about it or?
Sure. The financial plan. And this year. Actually, we actually. Program that helps each hospitalized children have an age vision. It works largely with the research about like. Is that the management of the fashion level in our children, children who are young? And so we actually, we raised a lot of money, almost $3,000 and we. Uh, we bought. Like 200 balls of yarn, maybe closer to 300 and a lot of fresh eggs. Together more than 100, like little aircraft, give out everything you need to learn how to freshen. And we get 217,000 worth of clothes to go to Delaware and then. We, I was able to support videos of Facebook, to catch the videos on how to freshen. They are going to be edited and broadcasted over the TV broadcast station in Martha. We are planning to expand the program to China in the near future.
Okay, so we'll move on to. Mr. Catalano's budget presentation.
There's a number filled in. Okay, so last time we met was a month ago. We had originally presented the preliminary budget to the board. Well, things happened since then. The governor gave his budget message on March 8th. We received our state numbers on March 10th. So we have to now revisit this and revise our budget from what you originally approved back in, in February. What's that?
It was 10th.
Yes, yeah. So this is what we're going to go over tonight. I am mainly going to focus on taxes. That is going to be the, what the focal point of this, this is mostly geared towards the Haddonfield taxpayer this presentation tonight. So this is where we are tonight. You'll be voting on the tentative budget that will be sent to the county executive. County Executive Superintendent. And then from there, the budget is due back from the county. By April 20th and then our public hearing is set to be had on our second April, or meeting on April 28th. That's where we'll have our public, public hearing and you will be voting to adopt this budget. Okay, this is, this is where we're at with our operating budget. Our tax levy. We, we, like we said last time, we're recommending 2% increase. That's the most we can increase our tax levy by us. That's the similar, it's usually without knowledge right there. Everything else. Increase is based off of historical figures, comfort level with projecting out future, future year revenue. One line I do want to point out, like I mentioned before, CD. Superintendent Klaus mentioned last week, we were fortunate to receive a $422,000 increase in CD. That's not what that number is. That, that, the 464, the difference there is we are also increasing our extraordinary aid by $22,000. We received a lot more extraordinary aid grant here, so we're comfortable increasing that. So that's how we got the difference from prior, when I say prior year, I'm talking about the year we're in right now, 2021, 2022. To what we will be really on tonight for the 2022, 2023. Okay, so that's, that's the CD increase right there. Fund balance, our order was mentioned up to talk about that briefly, but that's the money left unreserved from prior years that we can use in our operating budget for next year, $10,000. The other one, that is a couple things. One, this is written out in the, in the resolution on the agenda. Withdrawal from maintenance and capital reserve, $150,000 for maintenance reserve, $400,000 for capital. So that leads us to our bottom, bottom number for the operating budget, 43,501,000. Now, for the next five or six slides now, I'm going to focus on taxes. So tax levy line. This is, this is a pretty, pretty straightforward slide. This is what we're trying to, trying to articulate here is. When it comes to the tax levy, we have our 2% increase, that's it. These three. Adjustments that we can make to the tax levy, we're not eligible. Development adjustment, healthcare adjustment, bank cap. Bank cap is the one that is most commonly seen. The driver of bank cap or years, boards of education do not go to 2%. It goes in something called bank cap, generate bank cap, so that money can be used in future years to, to increase, not even more than 2%. The only other way to go above 2% is referendum, overproof referendum. So our increase in tax levy this year is 764,000. Okay, the tax rates. So there's, there's two rates. There's the general fund levy. That's what we control as a board of education, right? That's what you vote on to decide what is going to be the barrow for tax up certification. The other, the other rate that we, we do not control, this is controlled by the voters at Haddonfield, is our, our debt service rate. That is, that is issued debt that was voter approved. That, that's what the debt service rate is. So the increase in the tax, total tax rate for next year will be 1.27%. Yeah, there's some built in, I call it built in savings because there's, there's. The numerator and denominator change every year, so we control the numerator, the, the general fund tax levy. That's, that's going to be 38, 38.9 million dollars. Again, we don't control the debt service levy because that is set to issue debt that we've, that, that is advertising and, and we pay off every year. So let me explain that a little bit. Built in taxing things. This is to show you that if we were to leave the new, if we were to take the new tax levy, which next year will be 38.9 million dollars. Oh, plus, plus the, the debt service levy brings you to 42 million dollars. And, and, and keep the, and show it in a rate from last year's net, net taxable valuation. What's net taxable value? That is the, the assessed valuations of all property taxes in Haddonfield, applicable to school tax. That's not everything. That's not, it's not commercial. Just the applicable taxes in which our, our levy gets assessed against. If that were to stay flat, it's actually, it's actually a plus savings. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's not an increase because it's not as, as impactful as an increase because you're taking that levy and spreading costs on a much bigger number. A number that's 17.5 million dollars higher than last year. So that 764,000 dollar increase is being spread against a number that's 17.5 million dollars higher than last year. But pause for a second there. Any questions on that?
On everything or just this slide?
Just this slide.
So it's fair to say taxable valuation increase for everything that is worth is when a property gets reassessed. Right. They've done an addition and now they have a new tax.
New assessments or commonly valuations. The years.
Somebody pull the permit. They got to make taxes.
Okay, now this is what. The Haddonfield resident was, okay, what am I paying in taxes? As per the. As per the, the borough tax assessor, the average household assessment is $516,000. I, I put up a couple scenarios, so generally speaking, you can see whatever your house is assessed for, this is how much in taxes you will pay. And I, I showed it away where what it increases adequately monthly. So the average assessed home of $516,000 will see an increase, increase of 1.2% in taxes, which is about $115 annually.
So you're, can I ask a question? So you're proposing a 1.78% increase in taxes or maximum is 2%, right?
That's true.
Is this, I'm just making sure.
Two different rates. So we can increase the levy by 2%. That in effect is a 1.27% to the Haddonfield taxpayer.
Oh, okay.
Why? Because, well, our levy increased, obviously. And two, that, that's this slide. Taxable valuation, this. This is what our. Last year, 2.3 million dollars, 2.3 billion dollars. And next year will be 17.5 million dollars higher.
Because of that increase.
What's the other reason besides the levy? You said there were two reasons.
Yeah, why isn't it the full 2%?
It's the levy and.
Because you're, because it's the levy and the net valuation tax that the big billions dollar. Changing every way you're angering them.
So people who pay more taxes because their house is worth more means less taxes actually have to be paid by everybody else because we only need the number we need.
The increase in our budget is spread out against a even bigger number than last year.
And our number is 2% regardless if, if they buy 100 houses, a little run of Bancroft lot, we still have 2%. Even though the taxes the borough gets might go much, much greater.
Correct. Okay, this is a, this is a slide we'd like to show every year, basically, okay, for every dollar of taxes spent in Haddonfield. Where is it going in the school district? You break it down into, use that list, I'll tell you right now. The past few years I've been doing this, doesn't change much. I think generally I changed a couple pennies and I think there's a one penny shift. Uh, I think generally I changed a couple pennies and I think there's a one penny shift in, in the nursing and technology area, but that's the picture where your Haddonfield tax.
Special ed was twenty cents two years ago, twenty one cents last year, it's only eighteen cents this year. Is that because we're spreading more on the general side and it's just getting washed?
No, it's, I mean.
We haven't really changed or spent there.
If it's a bigger number, they're increasing, may not be proportionate, right? Uh, the ten percent increase on the special ed side, probably still smaller than a eight percent increase in the general ed side. Right, fair.
Mike, what is technology in common? Is that like career asset, software, um, is it equipment? Is that what, what that is?
Does it include any of our technology personnel or is that?
It's on the slide.
First director, IT staff. How about this? Also includes utility.
These areas, this isn't just, this isn't just self business, business people. So people in, in these. I hijacked this from the borough website. Two thousand twenty one taxes, that's correct. So uh, you haven't received your final tax bill as a resident yet. That will come in, in June, when a couple of things happen. I mean, this bounty has to, has to approve their budget also, and they have to wait for us for the taxman. So if I go a couple of slides ago, this is, this was our total tax levy last year. Forty one point one uh, million dollars, and that was a prior year tax rate. Uh, I also want to show this just so the taxpayer can see, okay? Fifty five uh, point nine percent of the tax rate is school related. From two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, it didn't even change a tenth of a percent. So I, I can't give you absolute assurance, but I am sure it's going to be similar for two thousand twenty two. Okay, I'm going to take the tax hat off. Okay, so this, this is, we, we've talked about this. This is what we're accomplishing, what we're adding. Um, and I'm, I'll, I'll repeat what I did say before. There's a little less than there was here a year ago, and that's because it's, it's getting tighter. We, we did it, but it's, it's, it's getting tighter. So um, but we're still able to continue all the things that we are doing.
Could you go back one minute to the ones that were at the accomplishments and additions? I just, so to people at home, I'm sure.
Any questions? Yeah, not a lot of numbers shown at you, please, please ask me to go back at all.
Um, one thing I'm wondering is if um, we lease the growth property, do we have timing to convert the current space into something more than storage or is that something we would pause for the rest of the? You know, like, how do you see those moving people?
Which, which, which?
Say it again.
Well, I'm just.
The growth, like if we lease the growth property and then the space like it's vacated, do we have?
Do we have, yeah, we have.
Money to like.
We have capital funds we can use to.
For the.
For the dominant.
Make that space more useful than the storage.
We didn't have that, we wouldn't.
Make them move, right. So I, yeah, just clarifying, I've been here.
So we're pulling money out of the capital and maintenance reserve. It's to kind of piggyback on my question, whatever we pull in the money out.
Well, there's been specific things, well, sorry, there's been specific things. One, we plan on taking care of this summer, but within this fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year, uh, we have to really address this all here in this main visual. Um, also, we still have Lander and next floor that we do have to tend to at some point. Uh, and then also what we've got to grant the role. We do intend to pursue investment for design being to, when we do move to grocery in the building network.
So I believe, Mike, the money being pulled from maintenance is not, that, that's to help the operating budget, correct? That, that is fifty. So for, to make the operating budget work, we, we have to take the hundred fifty out of maintenance and, and the fund balance, where we took about, that's the six hundred thousand last year, right? Seven hundred thousand, right?
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand. So to make the budget work, we're pulling about a quarter of a million dollars from other places to help the operating budget work. So, so Mike pointed out, we've got more state aid, but things are really getting tight. So that, that's not a practice we want to continue. But we have to be responsible, we have to make ourselves, we have to be able to function. So that's where that, that's, we're doing those things right now. We hope this time next year we won't be touching those things, but uh, you know, some costs. Things got expensive for the last year and a half, two years, so we're trying to keep that in control.
And then, Mike, you, um, you're, you're addressing the elevator that needs to be addressed. Are there other things within the school D program that you guys are looking at and you're either addressing or you're worried about because we can't address it?
So I, I'm just so, because that's a good question and just a lot of people don't know what school dude is. So school, um, with a dude solution now, is a software program that essentially everything down to the light bulbs in the building is cataloged and the lifespan of everything kind of ticks away. And Mike can look up to see when is the lifespan of this, you know, heater going to be up? And when is it going to be due for maintenance? So those types of things help us plan for our budget. So this question is essentially like, what is that predicting that we're going to be spending money?
Great question. Have to add, new solutions did change the name again. Used to, although if your name was any better, it's all brightly now.
Rightly.
It's always better, it is better.
Question. Yes, but not with this one. We plan to attack a lot of uh, indoor air quality and improvement of indoor ventilation using uh, federal funds from S R, or S U Vance. We'll actually have a presentation on that the next time we meet in April. Dr. Creolo and uh, our planning manager, Chris Plata, do you want to, we'll be talking about us.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
Any else?
Thank, thank you, Mike. Okay, uh, board committee reports, I think curriculum lab.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I ask one thing? Can the budget buy you, like, because you guys have a real hard time keeping your laptops up there. I feel bad. I, I, I've just had the angle seat to see how everybody struggles keeping their laptop still.
Okay, curriculum committee, I do not, uh, we did not meet this, I updated last week. Um, Dave, you have any facilities you already did last week, right?
Uh, we did facilities, uh, finance last week and the outcome was.
Um, Lynn, you did policy, yes. And then Linda, did you do? So, um, any PTA updates?
No, we're creating next week, so I will in the next round.
Okay, um, Dr. Creolo, do you have anything for your update?
I don't, Stephen.
All right, I was celebrating the American COVID report. Mr. Klaus?
Certainly, um, this is a, I'm going to be brief as well. I'm not a big basketball fan, so be brief. So uh, just an update on where we are, because it's something we've talked about, you know, I said before, place my COVID charge with, with this. Um, so update is the student and staff shirets, they're set, times are set, they're all in place, they're ready to go. We have agendas for those. These are the tentative dates for our community shirets, so we have those down. We'll start pulling the materials together for that and hopefully get that out shortly. One of the things we'll talk about the next long range facility planning committee is concerned about numbers. So the ideal number for this to work is about fifty people. In my mind, I see hundreds showing up, but I don't know that that's true. I mean, people who've been through this before, maybe, maybe hundreds do show up, maybe it is thirty or forty. So, but what I don't, what I don't want to do, I, I don't, we can do a lot, we can do a lot of things. Um, but I certainly don't want to come through, exclude people. We certainly want to have chances to do that. So we, we'll talk about how we can put this out there and maybe if there's an R S V P system and there, there is a school that gets a hundred people. We split off and have two nights, so we'll do something like that. So, so we're going to be through as we go through this. Um, that way we make sure everyone's voice is heard because we do want to hear everyone. And but we're also going to start thinking about developing, developing different outreach opportunities, right? So, so in addition to these formalized things, you know, I, I know in the past we have coffees and stuff like that. We can talk about ideas. So we'll, we'll, we'll start developing those type of things as we go through. And that's pretty straightforward with that. This is, this is what will be going out basically from, from us for land about what the, what the shirets are about, these visioning sessions, where they're going to sit and talk about what we, what we need, what we feel we think we need, what we wish we had, those type of things. Uh, it will take everything on the table by the time, so if you think about it, we started off with, before we talked to anyone, we went to the last referendum, uh, which, which had a bunch of stuff not touched, right? I think it was the tune of eighty million dollars not touched, just something that. Met with the administration, students, the other one, the staff coming up, the community. It's going to be a big crazy thing and there's going to be a time when you have to pay a pair of time from there. So, so right now, nothing's off the table. Um, that's why we want to make sure we hear from everyone. And then these are the, our upcoming, upcoming presentations. We have rest suspended coming up, um, the math update that was requested last week, uh, for, will be coming up on, on the fourteenth. Budget adoption and I meet with PTAs and we'll have some more discussion about the calendar coming on the twenty eighth as well. Um, I met with Tatum last night, um, and I've got the building scheduled coming up shortly, so, um, a lot of good stuff. Yes.
And I'm sorry I didn't notice that if it's happened, but um, also any just general outreach to the public regarding the calendar? Because not everybody can make the PTA meetings or, or are their plans still?
Well, not since, I can, I can, I'll be doing more, yeah. So we had the survey and all the presentations last year, coming back, meaning the PTA is part of that. Uh, but I'll certainly, this is not, not coming to this.
Yeah, I don't think we'll, I just want to make sure we get it in front of people, not only have time to do it.
In terms of the dates for the shirets, uh, what is our outreach to the general public going to look like to non-school community?
Uh, that's part of who, who we have to figure out.
So the, so the shirets are not the present, just to be clear, shirets are just envisioning statements of what the school communities are looking for, for their schools.
Right, and, and the schools are the community schools, that's so. It's easy to say this is parents and students and teachers, but people who live in town pay for the buildings. Theirs as well, this is the community. So we do have to make sure that there's a way to tap those people on the shoulder and ask what they think.
Yeah, one of the things we mentioned in the L R F P committee at some point was possibly seeing if the borough could blast it out or like on, so that people weren't just getting the communications from the school, so that from the borough if they would be able to send something out about, um, about.
And we could advertise.
And we could advertise.
Today.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I don't have much tonight, I just wanted to announce that, uh, we've been talking a lot about the retreat and re-envisioning the retreat and, um, what that will look like. And we're going to, um, form an ad hoc committee for, just to plan the retreat. So it's me, Linda, Lynn, Nag, um, Mr. Klaus and Dr. Creolo. And we'll be thinking about, um, you know, what, what it will look like. So if you have ideas, send them to one of us. And we're also going to be so on the lookout that we're going to be sending a poll for, um, the days and times that work. It'll be in the summer, but, um, just trying to figure out what everyone's schedule is in the summer. So you might see some random dates, whether it's a weekend or evening or early evening for them. So anyway, be on the lookout. Um, yeah, and in the meantime, any notes, ideas you have, send them to one of us and when we meet, we'll, we'll, you know, it's supposed to go. Okay, um, move on, we'll move on now to the open public comment. We'll now begin the open public comment session. Members of the community are invited to speak no more than three minutes about agenda items of this time. Non-agenda comments will be taken at the end of the meeting and follow the same guidelines. If your three minutes is up, we invite you to get back in line if you'd like to make additional comments. This is an opportunity for the board to listen but not debate issues or to enter a question and answer period. Please be aware that not all issues brought up before a board meeting will be resolved that evening. We ask you to state your name and the name of your street so that a designated can get back to you with a response if warranted. General responses to comments will be posted on the Board of Education website under the resources tab where it says open public comment replies. While public education can be an emotional issue, we strive to maintain a certain level of decorum at the meeting. Public meetings are recorded and televised and students often participate in the meetings. As such, citizens are expected to maintain a tone of courtesy and civility. Okay, so you may approach the podium.
Hold on. So my name is Robert Furman, five oh one Kings Highway West. So hello, word, my name is Robert Furman. My, my children started in kindergarten at Lizzie Haddon and are now in seventh and tenth grade. After trying every sport and every type of dance, my daughter Charlotte discovered crew in ninth grade. Last April, I watched a live stream, a live stream of my daughter racing on the Swoop River. I heard the announcer say, edging out Radnor High School at the fastest time of the day, Haddonfield. Now, in that race, our girls beat out Radnor, Notre Dame, Germantown Academy, Archbishop Carroll, Great Valley, Dome, Wounded Mercy and Bishop Eustace. Haddonfield outrouled two nationally ranked mainline high schools and seven prep schools where tuition can cost over forty thousand dollars a year. To win against these schools was incredible. Watching that race, race changed me. I am now the crew board president and while I have many goals, uh, my goal for the team is to obtain additional, additional financial support from the Haddonfield School District. We are currently called the Haddonfield Crew Club. However, we discovered that crew is actually a varsity sport under the direction of the Haddonfield Athletics Department. Tonight, I am not here to ask the board to pay for a fancy new boat. I am requesting you to consider assisting the team in funding traditional varsity sport expenses like busing our students to practices and races. Additional expenses for funding consideration would be regatta fees, boat house rental, equipment maintenance, partial coaching salaries and student financial aid, uh, where applicable. There are reasons why Haddonfield Memorial High School ranks eight hundred and seventy four out of eighteen thousand high schools in America. We excel in academics, athletics and community involvement. I dug a bit deeper and found out that Haddonfield ranks three hundred and seventy two places higher and five thousand eight hundred and ninety seven places higher than the two closest South Jersey high schools with crew teams. While we rank higher overall, they both have stronger crew programs with many more participants and more established infrastructures. The future is looking bright. We have a large and motivated freshman team. We recently held an interest meeting where over thirty families inquired about a middle school program. Currently, we are losing rovers to S J R C, a non-school affiliated club as our middle school students are starting there and staying there. With the addition of our own, was that, uh, okay. With the addition of our own middle school program, we can engage these rovers before they join elsewhere. In doing so, our team will naturally strengthen and grow. Crew attracts focused hard workers and crew also creates focused hard workers. Crew attracts focused hard workers, and crew also creates focused hard workers. When we, when we met with Charlotte's guidance counselor, he asked if she plans to row in college, as crew opens doors to the top schools. This really made an impact on me, and that one more pet to guide our children into great universities will certainly be good for our district and our community. So Superintendent Klaus, and all members of the Board of Education. On behalf of the Haddonfield Crew Team, we respectfully request financial assistance for our growing program. And one more thing, but that's on another page, but it's like, uh, April thirtieth is the Cooper, is the, uh, one of the races. There's a real, there's a great race coming up, uh, what's the name of it? The Garden State, and it's going to be April thirtieth at Cooper River, and I personally invite you all to come and join us at our tent, ring a cowbell, uh, and cheer on the team, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a crew team that are going to be raising. Crew has meant a lot to me, as it is incorporated a lot of teamwork skills, as well as giving me a better, a bigger friend. Also, side effects, that would be getting stronger and definitely having a lot more tolerance for things messing up. The other thing is, a lot of our activities are based around all of us having to work together, and it's majorly beneficial, especially when you commonly have to work in groups, in school, and outside of school, with your friends. And we would like. We would like the funding to go to us, please. Thank you.
I'm Chase Oldham, I'm also on the crew team, and I feel like crew is, it's meant a lot to me. Uh, my life definitely wouldn't be the same without it. Um, ever since I joined, the first day I came home, and I was like, this is meant for me. Um, I fit in here, any other sport, I tried, I didn't quite, I didn't quite fit the mold. I try other sports, but I feel like crew is my one home, the one place where I feel, you know, included in the group, and where I feel I can do my best. So, crew brings out the best in a lot of people, a lot of determination, you know? You keep going, you want to P R every day, you want to put your, you know, you put your hardest work into every practice. And I feel like crew is like, it's changed me so much, because I've grown so much, um, through how I just approach situations. Now I can go with more confidence, and I feel much better about myself after, even if I, even if I mess up, I feel much more confident afterwards, knowing that I did my best. And no matter what that might be, school, any of it. Um, crew has also been, um, it's been a way to expand the people I need and spend time with. Um, I made a lot of relationships through crew, especially upperclassmen, I didn't know many, because I was new here a few years ago. And I feel like it's just been a wonderful experience ever since I joined, and it, it's a shame that more people can't join due to like, the cost to join. I feel like it, it would, it limits us, it limits us a little bit, and if that price was lowered, and we were given more funding, more people could have the opportunity to improve how I improve, and overall, have a better, better life and a better high school life.
Uh, well, I'm Cameron Tardiddy, I'm also a member of the Haddonfield Crew Team. Uh, and like Dane and Chase, I feel that we, um, are an underfunded program here at the school. Uh, and I know with Haddonfield, that's one of our, uh, big kind of things we're known for, is a great athletics program, and I feel like at this point in time, we are not really competing with our main competition, which is South Jersey Rowing. Uh, they're just a little more competitive, and I feel like if we could also lower that barrier for a lot of students, that would definitely get us a bigger team, and we could be more competitive, but also like Chase, um, I've met just so many new friends, uh, Audrey, and some of the other, uh, Dane, Chase, I've known them a lot more, uh, and some of the other members who may have spoken. Uh, Travis is awesome. But, uh, in middle school, I never had really that sport, like, I know a lot of kids go basketball, field hockey, football, but I never really had that sport until I found crew in sixth grade, learning the rowing program. Uh, but I feel like, also with Haddonfield Athletics is one of our big, um, things we're known for, and if we could lower the barrier to entry for students that we could be more competitive, compete with South Jersey, and be just an overall better team.
Hi, Valerie Gander, Chase Oldham's mom, three thirteen Longwood Drive. Um, members of the board, Haddonfield community, parents, um, I want to start off by saying thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak on behalf of the crew team. My son Chase, as I told you, uh, he actually started with the sixth grade to be Learn to Row program. And he was immediately hooked, so, we were new to town in sixth grade, and Chase was still trying to find his way, find his people, as many kids are that age. I remember him coming home with a smile that I didn't often see with sports. Mom, the coach and the older kids were telling me I did great, I love it, I can actually do a sport! You see, for six long years, I endured many nights of frustration on the soccer field. Nights that I would force him to go to soccer, and I will come home, I don't know who was more frustrated, Chase or. Crew was different, and that has been my son's experience from the very first day. The transformation I'm not only seeing in my son, but also all of his friends that I've gotten to know so well since the fall, has been tremendous, uh, both physically and socially. It's not just rowing a boat. It requires physically demanding sport, uh, it's a physically demanding sport that requires coordination and thought. It's not about being the fastest or the strongest, but it's all about being in unison with a group, where all the working parts have to work together in order to get that boat together. Many of the kids I've spoken to, like you've heard tonight, have the same experience as Chase in trying to find a sport that they love. I would love to see other kids in the community have the same opportunity as Chase. Unfortunately, the financials and the commitment to driving discourage some from the opportunity. As a single parent for many years, I would have never been able to afford this program. Um, fortunately, my situation has changed now, but it would open up the door to so many single parents that might not have the opportunity that we have. Also, I would never be able to go back and forth, six days a week, to the Cooper River without any help. Um, if we had help perhaps with transportation, even one way, that would be a tremendous asset. Also, uh, let's see, if we could lower the cost and perhaps attract a new set of eager kids, lowering the cost would help encourage participation from a more diverse group of students. We are an N C double A sport for women, and inherently furthers female participation in high school and collegiate sports, also aiding in scholarships, as we, as we've seen with a lot of, especially the female athletes in the past. Crew is a varsity sport, and deserves the same, uh, the same comforts and conveniences as other varsity sports, such as busing. Finding transportation six days a week again has been especially, especially challenging with three kids of my own. Also, lowering the cost would keep us more competitive with South Jersey rowing. The funding would aid us in establishing a Learn to Row program for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and it would help Coach Henderson flourish and develop what he has started, and then those students can go right into our program. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone on behalf of the crew team. If you have any questions about crew, or your child wants to join, come see us, it's a great sport, and you can see our kids are phenomenal, so, thank you.
I'm a lot sure, um, two oh five Auburn, and also teacher at my school. Um, I feel like you've been talking about, you said, but, uh, my son Billy, uh, he tried his sport as well. Um, always the shortest kid, slowest kid, asthma, doesn't see well. Uh, so never connected with baseball, soccer, basketball, um, always was down about it. And he also tried, um, the Board of Row Program in sixth grade, asked a new student to the district as a tuition student, and he loved it, and he went away to get to high school. That's what we talked about. Um, and it slid off his expectations beyond, um, confidence, bigger friend, group. Um, working out on his own, which I never thought would save, I mean, there's always somebody to not go, but I should be part of the team. Uh, wasn't like, gumbo, you know, let me get, let me get after it, um, but he's like a new kid, confidence wise, physically, socially, um. I mean, as, as a teacher here, I supervised one student from the year, and he was like the social butterfly, which, new kid, like, you know, confidence, and, um, see, crew, I happened to do in college, it is a very inclusive sport, I, I, I heard, I heard the term old in team sport, and lots of context, and I think the ones that are wrong, crew's also a team sport, you know, eight people doing the same thing, in unison, no star, nobody has the ball, nobody's the ball, nobody's the glory, it's a team sport, so, I think it's an essential part of the athletic program. Excuse me, um, I hope it does get, I know it can be fully funded, it's a very expensive sport, but it's a wonderful sport, and I hope it can do whatever it can, thank you.
Um, hi, my name is Liz Hoffman, and I'm a sophomore, um, I started rowing fall of my freshman year. Um, this year, for in our class, I made a monument about rowing, and I wanted to read an excerpt from something I've said. Um, my monument represents the teamwork and dedication of those who row. Rowing is all about pushing yourself faster, physical, mental limits, which makes you very mentally strong. I love the teamwork aspect of the sport, because everyone is so supportive and willing to motivate their community. Crew involves a lot of trust, because there are forty-eight people in the boat, and you have to be willing to trust that everyone trusts your back. Crew has also really benefited my mental health. It allows me to be much more scheduled and manage my weather, which eventually leads to less stress. While it can be very frustrating and a massive time commitment, it can also be a place of opportunity, and I hope that everyone. Thank you.
Hello, sorry. Hello, my name is Charlotte Furman, I'm a sophomore here at H M H S, and I started rowing fall of my freshman year. Yes, a lot of people spoke, but Robert Furman is my dad. And I wrote a few reasons why crew has been amazing for me, and why it might be for others as well. Crew is a sport that worked with my personality, it's made up of individual goals, and it's also team-based. I've made incredible friends who are motivated and determined like me. The best workout ever, I never imagined being this struggling. It's a big commitment, people ask how I fit it, it in, and also take challenging tasks. One, the workout cleared my head, so I can go home and study. Two, the regimen has helped me to stay focused and balance all of my, my responsibilities, school and other. It has instilled empathy in me. We all make mistakes, and understanding them and helping each other through them has been character building and rewarding. We hug each other up, so we can be the best version of ourselves on and off the river. We get to be outside on the water, and it's beautiful. We have opportunities to get recruited and row in college. Whether I choose to row in college or not, I have learned to work both others, face challenges head-on, and push myself to be successful. These are all qualities that I know will be beneficial to me for the rest of my life. I hope you will consider additional support for our team, thank you.
Hello, good evening, board members, uh, my name is Stephanie Delby-Dub, I am a former first grade educational assistant, um, and as of yesterday, I was unfortunately. Um, I do ask that you hear my case, um, I do feel it's very important, and I also want to apologize that I do have local school assistants, because my words are jumbled, and I also I'm having trouble getting the calculations out to them. Um, I went from being educational assistant of the year in December, from a job that I absolutely loved and adored, and uh, yesterday I was let go, um, over the other side. Um, I did take three days off for an infusion therapy, um, I did get my fusion on February, I'm sorry, uh, March eighteenth, which was my second for my lettering position. Um, I did take seven days on break, um, I did not, I did also take a very long weekend vacation. Um, I just would like to be more to know that I don't feel that I was treated fairly yesterday, I don't feel that I, I was hurt properly. It was also not represented, but maybe you never, and there was also no benefit for me. Also, I would like to let you know that I'm asking from my child today. I am just asking that you do hear me, and I just want to know that I was not treated right yesterday. And there was the only thing, there's just nothing like seeing this little kid is just hugging you. Yesterday, before I was tired, I had a little girl come on stage, and her life has never been the same, because I, I just want you to know that you're speaking to somebody. So, before I leave here tonight, I ask that we use super pivot, not a poor, we have every other, and a patient, and somebody with this ability that we are treated fairly, in addition, I'm not there, so wishes, and, you know, thank you.
Okay, um, anyone else before we move on? Thank you all for speaking, um, especially for the students, um, we love to see students getting involved and being engaged, so thank you for coming out. Okay, um.
Robert, um, Mike Catalano, we'll, we'll be in touch with you, this is a fiscal thing, I mean, we're talking about a sport, we're really talking about money. So, the, 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 the contact person for this, for this discussion will be Mr. Catalano. So he'll be reaching out to you, and we can then start, continue the conversation. Thank you. And by the way, I'm sorry, when I was at, at the high school, the Garden State, uh, race at Cooper River is an awesome event, I've never missed it, and the food tent is incredible. And they even custom order your, I can see sandwiches sometime, I, I would, I would also go stop by and say.
Yep. Okay, um, moving on to, uh, governance. We have the acceptance of the monthly H I B, for, for no fire, and security program report, approval to abolish, um, regulation of door four zero honoring student achievement. Um, policy approval of five four four O, which really encompasses what's in that regulation, which is why we're abolishing it. Um, policy approval, of course, we have several policies up for a second reading. Remind me, one. All right, somebody. Yeah, yeah, regulation, sorry, I printed it out at home, and it's two-sided. Regulation two four six O dot thirty, um, the regulation on, um, student assessment, and the regulation on hate crimes and bias-related acts. Okay, uh, may I motion? All right, let me, let me just, give me a second to recruit here, can I just? There are fifteen, or fourteen now, policies, regulations for second. Oh, okay. So, yeah, I was just saying, yeah, I, the policies for second reading, I wasn't going to read them all, but we can discuss them all. So there's policies for second reading, and now I got one of them, and then there's, um, regulations on student assessment and hate crimes. Okay, um, can I have a motion? Okay. Linda and Dave. Okay, discussion? Okay, um, Mike, can you call roll?
Justin Blair, yeah. Ms. Hope.
Yes.
Ms. Holly Worth.
Yes.
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
Mr. Seidel.
Yes.
Vice President Hoagur.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah.
President Brooke.
Yes. Okay, moving on, we're on staple at next time. We're on curriculum and special education. Approval of field trips and conferences, resolution to amend Josh Cook coaching service, resolution to approve the summer college essay course, resolution between the Gloucester County Special Services School District and the Haddonfield Board of Ed, a couple resolutions between Walsh Legacy and the Haddonfield School District for home down instruction, resolution between Edgysir and Haddonfield Board of Ed, resolution between Duran and the Haddonfield Board of Ed, resolution between Valley Forge Academy and Haddonfield Board of Ed, resolution to approve student teaching agreement between Haddonfield and Newton University, resolution to approve the board county special, early from county special services tuition rates, resolution for a student to receive homebound instruction, resolution for student, a few students to receive, or a student to receive homebound instruction from a few different teachers, resolution between Language Circle Enterprises and Haddonfield Board of Ed for professional development for our teachers, ELA teachers, resolution between the Kindergartens Mortgage Board for Haddonfield Board of Ed, and another resolution for a student to receive homebound instruction from several teachers. Have a motion?
Motion.
Lynn and Heather? Discussion?
If we just get a little bit more information on the Language Circle Enterprises and the Board of Ed for the ELA teachers that's supplementing Lucy Hawkins, is this a new program?
It's more writing and phonics, and so it does supplement that. Lucy Hawkins, the one thing that engineers talk about is that it's just not as strong in the direct instruction and writing and phonics. And so this is the program that Dr. Creole ran in a couple of years ago with really great results, but it's pretty intensive. It's three days of training, so you also understand how to use it on phonetics. We've done work with scope and sequence lately in the last couple of years, but we just don't have enough teachers to train. So it wouldn't be a recurring thing every year. It would be more like every several years.
And one of the things that I, the benefits, I think, to this program is we're learning more and more about how accommodations that we might make for a classified student, special education, really helps everyone. And so what do you think that this is, this is kind of a program that, like the UDL model, that you're you're able to reach all students by giving, by just working the accommodations into the curriculum? And I think this kind of helps, this does help supplement Lucy Hawkins in the sense that it gives that explicit instruction, direct instruction to kids who might not get it implicitly with writing. And writing is one of those skills that I think a lot of us have seen. There's just huge variation. I'm excited about it. I think it'll be good. Any other questions, discussion, or question?
On O, kindergarten's mortgage board, great word. But two hundred and fifty dollars, so how many students, how many teachers does that cover for the period of?
It's for five, and two of the teachers are, or one of the teachers is a facilitator, and the other teacher, one of the other teachers has offered to share, you know, the, you know, whatever they find. So it's a little bit like, well, first off, it came, the request came to your teachers, which is always kind of inspiring when they do the digging for, you know, for you, and they found it. And I did, I did check that in correspondence. It's a bit of a repository where they can come in and pull scheduling ideas and it's maxed. So it's come down to about, they come down to put the odds on a teacher. Thank you.
Any views? Mike, can you call roll?
Ms. Hope.
Yes.
Ms. Holliworth.
Yes.
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
Mr. Seidel.
Yes.
Vice President Hoagur.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Essenpler.
Yes.
President Brooke.
Yes. Hey, personnel. Approval of new personnel transfers, salary upgrades, and mentoring extracurricular coaching appointments. A resolution to approve the following teachers for after-school reading enrichment program. A resolution to approve teachers for the summer twenty twenty-two learning acceleration program. Which is quite a proof of, so thank you all of those teachers who are on here for giving up their time for us. Resolution to approve the following EAs for the summer twenty twenty-two learning acceleration program. Any other motion? Linda?
Okay.
Right? Discussion?
Well, we have three retirements, so I'm giving a little bit of that to special people who've been in the long time. So I'm going to talk about that. Like, she was middle school. She actually started off as a math teacher, many people don't know. They know her as the technology person at the school. Dad was, if the children had her, was full of energy, always a great attitude, great smile. And you would go into her classroom and just look what was happening, and just say, first of all, I don't understand, but I know it's great, right? And I think anyone who had any interaction with her walked away feeling good. I always did. It's always one of the places to visit. She's going to be sorely missed. We obviously wish her well. And so there'll be a whole fellow in middle school without that. So I just wanted to say from middle school.
This is really tough, and I guess Chuck and I, we've been around long enough now that these people who are leaving us are really sad to see them go. Terry Hildebrand has been a school psychologist in our school district for, I want to say nearly eighteen years. I also had the pleasure of working with Ms. Hildebrand when I was an administrator at Cherry Hill Public Schools. So when Bonnie Ruben Sherburne became the director here in Haddonfield, she felt so highly of Terry that she really poached her from Cherry Hill. She had no plans to come on over. And that speaks to the quality of person she is. There is no more person without higher ethics. She was always a pleasure to work with. And some people don't know, because this is the kind of person she is, through twenty fourteen, she was the New Jersey State School Psychologist of the Year. She's not one for fanfare. She was never one to tell people that. But the award that she received was well-deserved. And I always appreciate that when I was director of special education, how student-centered she was and how family-focused she was at the same time, and worked tirelessly to really make those two things meet at a point where not only did you serve the needs of the students, but you also supported the needs of the family in supporting the students. So a tremendous loss to the district. I'm very happy to see that she's making the decision to retire. And that brings us to Linda Marino. I had the distinct pleasure of working with Linda Wells, principal at TANIM for six years. We often say that our building secretaries are the face of our schools. First person you see when you call a school, when you're transferring in, or you're a new parent, that's the first person who you speak. And for those who have experienced working and speaking with Linda Marino, she's that kind of person that after the first phone call, the warmth that exudes from her personality, from her voice, from her affect, it's contagious. With that, she was incredibly, continues to be incredibly dedicated, always working beyond hours without asking. She's the type of administrative assistant where when I'm leaving, and now I'm starting to feel guilty, I'm leaving at five o'clock, and she's still there. And within this time to go home to see her rankings. Great child, she's. So again, I know her husband retired a couple of years ago, so she's, I think, in a good spot. And I always admire people who are able to retire on their own terms. Both lived up in terror in that situation. This could be hard to replace them in our district. Is it a better place for having both of these?
I have to thank both of you for those tributes to all three of them, because they're all beloved in this district, and they really deserve those accolades, and they will be very sorely missed, so. We're asking for that, but thank you.
We, sorry, we actually do have to make a little bit of adjustment. Letter D, the first list of educational assistant there, that's an error. So if we could, motion and second to amend letter D to just list those four, those four bottom educational assistants. And then you can just take a voice.
You have to take all those in favor?
All those.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay, any other comments for?
Just checking section I, that is administrative recognition.
I in personnel.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. No, he answered.
Oh, okay.
He asked about some recommendations.
Oh, okay. Okay, what could you take off?
Ms. Holliworth.
Yes.
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
Mr. Seidel.
Yes.
Vice President Hoagur.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Essenpler.
Yes.
Ms. Hope.
Yes.
President Brooke.
Yes. Okay, for business and finance, accepting our audits for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Sidebar agreement with custodial ground salary schedule, approve the land associate's free referendum agreement, approval of the contract with JSV Entertainment for the dances, approval to solicit requests for proposals for professional services, approval of the tuition reimbursement for the following employees, recommending the adoption of the twenty twenty, of the twenty, that's a hard, that's hard to say, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three tentative budget. Recommend adoption of a new tort claims act form, approve lease agreement with Haddonfield Partners fourth, payment of bills, budget transfers, the board secretary was in for cash summary reports. I have a motion? Linda and Dave. Discussion?
Mike, did you ever get the attachment for?
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, I missed it.
Yeah, yeah. Let me get the other two. Anyone else have any? Okay, Mike, can you call roll?
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
Mr. Seidel.
Yes.
Vice President Hoagur. Ms. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Essenpler.
Yes.
Ms. Hope.
Yes.
Ms. Holliworth.
Yes.
President Brooke.
Yes. Approval of the minutes, the executive session January twentieth, our regular meeting February tenth, a regular February twenty-fourth. Should we have the, oh wait, can I have a motion? Right, second. Mike? Discussion? Are we missing one from January twentieth? Shouldn't we have the regular meeting minutes from January twentieth, that we have the executive session?
They, they were probably already approved.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they were probably already approved.
Okay.
It's just the executive session minutes. I take caution sometimes, I have to be sure I put in everything I should. Not lengthy or spotty.
Right. Okay, I just finished. Anyone else? Okay, can you call roll?
Mr. Seidel.
I'm staying on five B, but yes, on the others.
Vice President Hoagur.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Essenpler.
Yeah.
Ms. Hope.
Yes.
Ms. Holliworth.
Yes.
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
President Brooke.
Yes. Okay, any public comments or non agenda items? Items for future consideration by the board?
It's not an item for future consideration, but it's worth a comment. Now that we've voted on it, I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate Dr. Henderson. We were tough on her with the addition placement, and the time she took to explain it to us changed my mind, so. Got to keep it open mind here, but she really, she put in the work, and I think it's a good outcome for the district for that student.
Yeah, I agree, and she changed my mind, too. Okay. All right, motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Stop now, Dave and Maggie? Meeting adjourned.